I know Alder Vice President Curry is running a few moments late, so. Once I see Alder Bennett connected to audio, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Karen, can you please call the roll?
Yes, President Furman.
President.
Vice President Curry. Alder Bennett. Alder Conklin.
Looks like she just connected to audio, so Alder Conklin, you're here, right?
I am, hello.
Great, thank you. Alder Figaro Cole. Alder Foster.
Here.
Alder Heck.
Here.
You have Quorum.
Great, thank you. I assume we still don't have anybody registered for a public comment? There's nobody here, so I will move right along. Actually, before I do that, can I get a motion for a minute?
I'll move it.
Second, there we go. Any questions, comments, corrections, suggestions for the minutes? It was Alder Heck with the moving and seconded by Alder Foster. Seeing none unless I hear otherwise, I will assume approval by unanimous consent and we will continually moving through our agenda. No public comment, nobody's registered, so disclosures and recusals, does anybody have any? Not seeing any. The first item on our agenda is probably the most exciting item on our agenda this evening, Legislative File 74901. Attorney Haas, do you want to tell us pretty quickly on what we're looking at?
Sure, so this is the regular city attorney revisers ordinance and it really, you know, corrects errors in the ordinances and citations to ordinances that sometimes change and minor wording revision, so. I'm happy to answer any questions, but it is not intended to have any substantive changes made in the ordinance, it's really technical changes.
I do not liken consistencies or improper references, so I appreciate this. Are there any questions for Attorney Haas?
For those of you who are new, we try to do this usually two or three times a year, just to our ordinance revision specialist, Megan Glaser, goes through the code book with a fine tooth comb, keeps the list, and then we try to update every two or three times a year.
Thank you, Attorney Haas. Any questions for Attorney Haas? Can I get a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, unless I see otherwise, I will assume approval by unanimous consent and we'll move on to Legislative File 75054, defining appropriate use of Alder blogs and allowable topics of Alder hosted public meetings during the election period. I have proposed this resolution that we'll talk about this evening in order to just sort of try to give Alders a little bit more clarity. We obviously did the fifty piece rule change a bit ago, but there still seems to be a little bit of a void in our policy to give people a little bit better guidance, so. Attorney Haas, do you want to talk about this briefly? It's obviously talks a little about the history, but it's pretty straightforward.
Yes, thank you, President Furman. You know, I think the important thing to note is the original resolution, we tried to clarify some rules that would be allowable under the state's fifty piece statute. But it did not, it did not really specify what content could be included on Alder blogs and we've received a bunch of questions since that time, that's made it clear that. I think some clarification would help. It would help particularly so that our office and the council office has some guidance, so that when Alders call and say, can I put this on my blog? That we have some guidance other than just, you know, anything goes because it's on the blog as opposed to being mailed out. It would also help so that we don't have disputes that we have to resolve about what can and can't be put on the blog, so. In my opinion, it would be best for that guidance to come from the council rather than for us and the council office to be trying to sort those out on the fly. I would note, and you know, Karen raised some good questions just this week about some items, you know, that under this proposal would not be permitted as they are currently. Just announcements about city agency operations in general. I mean, those are fairly common, I think, or, you know, repeating posts that are on the police department blotter. I don't think those really qualify under this resolution, so we just want to make clear what the change would be here in case there's any concerns about that. Another item that Karen brought up is, you know, emergency operations of the city. What if there's a storm or a flood during this election period that Alders want to communicate about under this language? You know, it would have to fall under something specific that's pending before the council or BCC or an agency or some upcoming meeting. So, you know, personally, I don't, you know, it doesn't matter to me what the rule is, it matters to me, I think, that the rule is clear and it conveys, you know, what the council wants to do. And with the flexibility that I guess the council as a whole thinks is appropriate during the election season, so that communications are not misused for campaign purposes.
Thank you, Attorney Haas. Alder Foster, I assume you have a question for Attorney Haas?
Yeah, I did. Well, maybe it's for both of you, but I'm a little bit. I'm a little bit worried of like causing issues or preventing what things that I think would be maybe more like routine, good, community, you know, links to city stuff, et cetera. And I guess my question is, did you explore, you know, the sort of the other, instead of saying neither the only, if it doesn't meet sort of this narrow thing, then it's not okay, and instead saying, like trying to define here or think, like. Here are the things that are not included in this. Just, I guess, curious about if you thought through that at all?
No, I think we were focused on here are the things you can do opposed to doing it the opposite way. You know, I am absolutely open and, you know, Attorney Haas can give us advice as we talk through it. Absolutely open this evening to making a change in how this is worded. I do think, you know, Attorney Haas has already, you know, since this has been drafted, figured out there are some pretty, pretty large issues with being precluded. I think there are probably some easy ways to fix that, but I'm certainly open when we get more to discussion and we could bring Attorney Haas in to see whether or not he's comfortable with some of that stuff to modifying this and expanding it.
Okay, I've got some thoughts I'll save to discussion, and thanks.
Yeah. Alder Figaro Cole.
So I'm just gonna ask the question in the context of my own blogs, which is a pretty standard format since I started, so I do cover the things that you have in there on one and two, but in addition, I also include things that are specific to my district that perhaps are like, you know. An Awood Association asking to send something or something related to our team. Like, this seems to be like broader than that, you know what I mean? Like, is it gonna be an issue that I continue to do that, or should I just, or are we saying we should just limit our blog to forwarding what staff gives every week and move on with our lives?
I think that's for us to talk about. I mean, I think unfortunately, the state guidance is not as clear as we'd all like it to be. Attorney Haas has spent much more time on this, I'm sure he's wished he did, and will spend a bunch of time on it this evening, but I mean, according to the definition of what this resolution is trying to accomplish, no, you can't pass along that stuff. That doesn't mean we can't modify that this evening and talk about whether that modification, we think falls within what the state, you know, allows us to do. I mean, but the big goal here is for us not to be abusing the power of incumbency and city resources, you know, to get reelected, and so that's a. I wish it was clearer, but that's what we're working with. Alder Bennett?
Yeah, I was wondering, I don't, I guess maybe when it's time to move a motion, I feel like we should be at least able to share things that are happening in our district, hopefully you can. Shit, okay, and then also like in the context of my blog, for example, I'm not the most prolific blogger, unlike some of you, but when I do blog, it's about something that's I find important. That I want to share with my constituents, like, you know, maybe sharing, I just use an example, like we have a new development, the 415 Lake Street Garage, and sharing, you know, kind of discussions that's happening. It seems like that wouldn't be permitted, even though I probably would.
Alder Bennett. Alder Bennett, it says, "Specific matters pending before the common council, city boards, commissions, and committees or city agencies prior to the end of the election committee." I think a project that's in development, yeah, would certainly be covered and allowable and make sense.
Okay, nevermind, thank you.
So I don't think I'm gonna entertain a motion at this time. Alder Rahili, questions?
Yes, thank you. My question is, for example, still this resolution is a little bit in the gray area, there's no specifics on what you can and what you cannot do. For example, I, you know, if someone, you know, the main purpose is not the incumbent to use the, to over abuse the power, but then how can we do our business as usual? That's why we were elected. For example, you know, some of the issues is if last, you know, this week I had a meeting scheduled for the streets and I had to cancel that because I didn't know if it was under the gray area or not. So I'm just wondering what specifics that we cannot do as Alder in term of communicating with our constituents.
Yeah, I think this resolution, Alder Rahili, is trying to clarify that better, or at least try to give people some guardrails. Attorney Haas obviously did a long presentation with us and showed how unfortunate the state law is, to be kind. But, you know, I don't know if Attorney, but you know, I think with this resolution, we're trying to be specific about saying, you know, right now, as proposed, that these are matters pending before the city council and that there are upcoming meetings and city sponsored events. It sounds like there are gonna be some Alders that are gonna have some questions about adding some things because we've seen already, you know, such as an emergency or such as, you know, maybe another city press release, can we do that? But, you know, this is difficult, and so I think we're trying to give ourselves, you know, some guardrails, you know, operating under a really difficult state law that really wasn't written for us, but applies to us. Attorney Haas, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, a couple of thoughts, you know, this, to respond to Alder Rahili, the state statute definitely does restrict what elected officials can do in the campaign, in the election period compared to the rest of the term. You know, in the state legislature, there's a bit of a mad rush before December 1st for them to be, to send out their last newsletters of the term, and that's the last time they can send out a newsletter to their constituents before the election. And so it is a restriction under the state law. What is unclear and is really, I think, up to the council is. You know, we have this resolution now, which sort of gets, gives us, gives the city an avenue under the statute because it is essentially directing staff to continue with the automated blog subscription service. It does not address the content of what those blogs are, and the state statute doesn't either. I think the content piece is less about the fifty piece rule and more about the use of public resources. And that's why it's a little bit vague, because you can make arguments either way that, hey, this is just normal legislative business or Alder business, and somebody else might argue, well, you're using your office to just simply get your name out more before the election and that enhances the advantages to the incumbent. And so, you know, if the council is gonna go down their strout, as we already have, to authorize the blogs to continue, you know, I think there's some latitude for what you can and can't, what you can permit and what you can prohibit. The other thing I would say, as far as, this just kind of came to me, maybe as far as emergencies, you know, we could consider another clause stating that. Anything related to an emergency declaration or even something broader, if there's a weather, you know, event or something like that, where we wouldn't, where would not easily fall under these other two points.
Can I ask a follow up, Attorney Haas?
Sure.
So my other question, you know, in regards to what you just said, is the state is the one who's, you know, putting this law, but, you know, we need to consider that the state are in, are not in session, but we are still working, right? So we need to be able to compare those, that we are trying to follow a state law that they are, you know, they're already in, not in session, but we're doing our business as usual. The other piece I want to ask also is emergency but non-emergency like flood or weather, but for example, something happened in my district. And a good example is, you know, the romantic store in my district, how can I be able to communicate with my constituents when already something happened that I wasn't aware through the zoning department? And the, my email is overflowing with some, you know, complaints or why this is happening and why not? So how would you, as an Alder, how can I be able to communicate with my constituents in such regards?
Well, you know, as far as your first point, I think we talked about that a little bit in the informational meeting, that the statute doesn't make a distinction between state legislators and local elected officials. It just doesn't, and we pointed that out to the Ethics Commission in our communication with them, but there's just no distinction there, so that's what the statute is, that's what it requires. You know, as far as what you can communicate, this is only an issue because the automated subscription service is continuing. If you posted information on your blog, it would not be an issue under the fifty piece rule if you only posted it, but it's the fact that it's being sent out to more than forty nine people, which makes it an issue under the fifty piece rule. As well as, you know, as I said separately, with the, you know, what is the, you know, range of communications you can have that do not make it appear to be, you know, campaign related and using city resources for a campaign purpose? And that's more under the city ethics code.
Hold on, hold on one second, I do, there's an important thing, Attorney Haas, that I think needs to be clarified. This resolution that we're talking about and debating tonight actually does say, "Specific matters pending before the common council, city boards, commissions, and committees or city agencies prior to the end of the election period." So your example of that business opening up in your district that wasn't in front of any board but was dealing with a city agency, getting permits, for example, certainly is, would absolutely be fair game according to this particular draft of what we're talking about this evening. I just wanted to make that clear, that is certainly there, and at least in my opinion, it seems legitimate, but I do at least want you to know that that would be something that would be covered and allowed.
So I could held the meeting?
Yes, absolutely. According to this resolution, yes, you could have held the meeting about a business opening up in your district because it's in front of an agency. Attorney Haas, do you agree with that interpretation?
Yeah, and I wasn't clear about what the specific case was. I think Alder Rahili was, when she mentioned canceling a meeting, was referring to a different meeting, but, you know, in the case of a business, I think it would, it would have to be, you know, related to. How that, you know, what the city agency involvement is in that process. Or maybe, you know, advising constituents about where the city is at in relation to that particular business.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Heck.
Thank you. This is for Attorney Haas, it's something I hadn't thought of before. In this resolution, you know, there are some things we could blog about if we were candidates, and I'm wondering about how opinion, Alder opinion plays into that. If there's something before council, let's say, can I write a blog post that's maybe advocating for a certain position on an item that's before a board or a council or even with regard to an agency? And I know that it's hard to say what's an opinion and what's not, but sometimes you can tell.
Yeah, no, I think that's permitted under this language, it doesn't, it just has to be related to a specific manner, I think, was the main point. It couldn't be just general, you know, city operations or talking about something that was not going to be upcoming before the election.
Okay, I guess my, I'm not an attorney, obviously, but I was thinking that that opinion, the ability to write an opinion piece might give somebody an unfair advantage, but I'll think about that.
I will just say, I mean, you know, we used to run into this all the time at the state, and, you know, our feeling was there really isn't a practical way to eliminate every advantage of incumbency. And I think you're correct, Alder, that it could, you could have, for instance, you could be campaigning on a topic that is also fair game to be stating an opinion about on your blog because it's coming up in the next month. And I think that would be permitted under this resolution unless it's restricted even further.
That makes some sense. Okay, thank you, that's my question.
Thank you, Alder Heck. Alder Madison.
Thank you. I just have a quick question. I feel like I have a handle on the rules thus far around how we use the blog update tool, but my quick question is, and I've been hesitant to send a blog until I got an answer, but. Does the public get updated about this shift in what we can and cannot send out to them? And the reason I ask is because when I started late October, you know, once I finally got up and going on the update tool, I put in my first one that, you know, you'll hear these kind of things from me in this newsletter update. There were like four to six things I noted, and so because then when I learned about the various rules around election season, that eliminated, I believe, two or three of those things you could expect to hear from me. And so I just want to know, can I put in an update, like due to, you know, this sort of like time of year, I'll likely not include these three areas of the newsletter going forward until, you know, in the future? But I just wanted some to clarify, does the public or does anybody let their newsletter readers know that this change is happening for a couple of months, or, you know, how does that work?
Yeah, so I guess, you know, I'm not aware that there's been any communication to the public about this. To me, that sounds like fair game to explain to people. I mean, this is, this fifty piece rule is in effect for this period, and so. And so, uh, uh, you know, I don't, I I think that that would be fair game to explain, you know, why you're only addressing certain matters.
And Alder Alder Madison, I will add that last year, last year, uh, last uh, election cycle, we actually turned off uh, blog emailing. And um, I believe a note was sent out automatically by staff, letting people know that that was the case. Does any, does anybody remember if we actually sent something out? I know I sent something out to my readers and said, you know, I'm not going to stop blogging. Just so you know, I'm going to continue to do this, but you're going to have to get it manually. But I could have swore that we also had something automated sent out. Anybody remember that? No, nobody.
I think there was, yeah, I think there was, I think I pushed for it.
Okay, yeah, so we haven't done that this year. And I do think if we end up, you know, I think I think it's absolute fair game. But right now those rules are hopefully going to be written by the council soon. So it's even clearer, but absolutely, yeah, let your residents know that, you know.
Okay.
We're under we're in a weird period.
Thank you.
Alder Bennett.
Okay, I have two questions. One, does so like, does this ordinance only apply, does it apply to all alders? Or does it apply to only those running in a like an opposed election?
Yeah, the yeah, this this clarifies that it does not apply to alders who have filed a um, notification of non candidacy and are not actively campaigning.
Okay.
So until until an alder files that notification, it it would apply.
Could we, could we include alders that are not running opposed? Because I don't understand why we would restrict them if they're not.
It 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 would include alders who are running, who are unopposed. It's still, yeah, just others who are not running are not subject to these limitations.
Uh, so so to be clear, I think there's some confusion. Alder Bennett, if you're running unopposed, these rules will still apply to you because you're in a campaign, even though nobody's running against you.
Right, but does that make sense?
Well, the reason I think it does is because there could be a writing candidate all the way up to the Friday before the election. People can announce or register as a writing candidate. So you don't know for sure.
Makes sense, makes sense. Um, and then secondly, I was wondering, I know this is like city blog, but I kind of just want a clarification on like who owns our like social media accounts? For example, I have a district eight alder Instagram, Twitter and Facebook account. And um, that that was passed down to me by my predecessor. Does the city own that, those accounts?
Alder Bennett, who gave you that account?
Max.
Max gave you that account.
No, but it's the ones, I think it's the one a formal official city one Karen Camprelli, but it is.
Karen, do you want to talk more about that?
So we looked into this question for the district data count, um, because Larissa is deep in the details of providing some guidance on social media accounts. And that was one of our questions. So if believe at least the face Facebook page is a is something that IT created for District Eight, so it is using city resources and it, I believe it it must have been created under the old social media policy, which is the policy that's in the call, it's in the council policy guide from from 2011. That's that's where that stands right now. And we're working on guidance that will address that as well as accounts folks have created independently.
Is District Eight the only one that has a social media account? Y'all need to get on that. Um, but um, so that's only for our Facebook. What about the Instagram and Twitter, you know?
I I think I need to go back and ask IT about the Instagram. And I will see what information, at least one of those, if not all of them are from IT.
And Alder Bennett, we had a whole presentation at C C E C a few weeks ago about doing more social media, social media pilot, having official accounts, et cetera. So we're certainly trying to get on it and trying to at least um, provide uh, parameters and support and help for for doing something more official. Obviously, we hand down our blog subscriptions, but we don't hand down our social media. How can, how can we be better about that? We're trying to figure that out.
Right, so I'm assuming these laws apply to those accounts, even if they aren't officially owned by the city?
If our attorney house, if those are registered by the city and they're given to the alder to use, then there's there's city resources, right?
Right, they're correct, they're city resources. So the rules about, you know, not using, not campaigning on those social media accounts would apply if they're owned by the city. Um, also you have to keep in mind, if they're not owned by the city, the public records retention requirements you would be responsible for. And, you know, this resolution does not address the content of other social media other than the blogs.
Uh, if I if I could just add on there, Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
And attorney house can confirm this, but I think the other point, there's a lot of different things that are being discussed right now. But the social media, my understanding within the 50 piece rule is considered one piece. So it's actually while while it, yes, you can't campaign on it. It actually doesn't have the same issues that the email subscription does, which is one of the reasons we passed the resolution that right now is exempting. So right now, the email subscription is acting as if it were a Facebook post, which is allowed under the 50 piece rule. What's in front of us right now is should we further, should we now restrict it back down again? And have only for limited purposes, because right now, and that this is my question, can you confirm? Right now, state 50 piece rule applies, but we've exempted use of the blog without limitations. So the current, the current status, if we don't pass anything is that, is we can basically use the blog not for campaigning, but without any other further restrictions, correct?
Under you crack, that's correct under the 50 piece rule. The only thing I other thing I would add is, you know, there's a lot of discussion about not only that rule, but, you know, using city resources for a private purpose. And that's something separate and that's, that's what's led to this whole discussion about what it, what is all their business and what is campaigning? And I think it's also, you know, the complication is that we've not worked in this concept of, you know, an advantage to an incumbent, which is not necessarily, doesn't necessarily mean you're campaigning. But there could be an advantage to an incumbent that's inherent in the use of the blog, where you're not talking about campaign campaigning, but it's still something that's not available to a challenger. And and I think that is something I think the state would not really be concerned about unless it was obvious campaigning, saying vote for me using city resources. So that is really, that's what I keep coming back to. I think that is really decisions for the council to make about how restrictive it wants to be.
Wait, we went kind of all over the place there, Alder Bennett, but hopefully that that information was helpful for everybody that's here. Do you have, do you have any follow up questions?
Yeah. I mean, I don't use social media to campaign anyways. No, 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 to campaign, like using, using the Facebook. And, you know, my District Eight official stuff.
Alder Bennett, what question do you have?
I don't, I don't know. I I'm just a bit confused, though, but you know, it's fine, I'll figure it out.
Okay, well, we'll have more discussion. Hopefully, we can, we can help clarify this through through discussion, um, uh, you know, to this evening. Uh, Alda Figaro Cole, go ahead.
I had a, I want clarification, which I think um, Grant just touched on, but I I want last time we discussed this, we said one blog equal one entry. So I started counting like I have a, I set up on my blogs a um, classification, so I can count them and not get over the 49. But then Grant just mentioned that we don't have to worry about the blogs. We're unlimited use of the blog as long as it stays on the two criteria that you pointed out. Is that correct? Or do we still say one blog equals one piece? And I should not go over 49 in total?
Uh, are you talking about the number of times that you posted?
In the blog, on my regular city blog. So last time we discussed was one blog equals one. One, you know, we have 49 pieces and one blog counts as one. So if I posted one block a week, that's for, you know, four blocks a month or whatever.
No, uh, no, uh, if I understand you right, I'm not, I don't think that's the proper calculation. The it's it's only the 49 piece rule applies only to substantially identical identical communications. So if you post on all kinds of different topics, that's fine. It's it's only if you post it, you post a message, message A on the blog, and then you send out separately 50 letters with the same message, then that's exceeding the the 50 piece rule. But you can post as many different messages on the blog as you want and and it will count as one posting for each of those messages. Does that, does that make sense?
So is it one again, so one posting for each blog release that I make?
Right, every time you, each message that you post in a blog counts as one. But if you have, you know, 10 different messages on your blog, that counts as one for each of those messages. And then if you take one of those messages and separately post it on 50 other social media sites, then you're exceeding the the 50 piece rule. Or you send it out in a letter. So you don't have to worry about, I don't, you don't have to worry about the number of different messages that you post on blogs.
Okay.
I'm not sure if I'm being clear enough, but.
I I saw it had this very clear in my mind already last time we discussed this. So I kind of like already had a path, you know? And so, I mean, I'm not going to be sending any individual emails. I'm not going to be sending any letters. I understand if there's a license required, like a liquor store license, that's not, that's excluded. Somebody else will take care of that. If something for mail works, somebody else take care of that. So that's not me, whatever. I get all of that and not making any mess. And all I'm doing is continuing to blog every week, once, once a week, I'm going to send a blog with whatever goes in there, meetings, notifications, whatever. And the way I understood was that that release of that one blog, when I hit submit, that's counts as one.
It it.
But it's not.
No, it 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 does, it does count as one. I'm not, I'm not explaining this clearly.
It counts as one and only one. And then you reset the timer the next time you do a blog. It's not one and then two and then three, it's just one. And the next time it's one and you're not getting up to 50, you're okay.
Right.
Okay, so I don't have to worry about counting, keeping track of the blogs. Got it. All right, thank you, guys.
Fun stuff. Thank you, Alda Figaro Cole, Alda Foster.
I was ready to get into discussion if there are no other questions.
I I have, uh, and that's fine. I think we're probably going to dip our toes back into questions too during the discussion. So let's, let's start chatting. Go ahead, Alda Foster.
All right. My initial instinct is to be really careful about sort of re restricting um, and and narrowing it down. I I mean, I put a lot of energy into with Alder, uh, with attorney Haas. Look at that, you get to be an older now, um, around getting some license um, to do, I I think, maybe it was Alder Wellhely that that mentioned they're sort of doing our job. And I think it is very different in character than the state um, roles that I they definitely had most in mind when they created the 50 piece rule. And yes, it applies all of us, but they did leave an opening to that we, um, you know, haven't have invoked. And right now, I feel like the, I think it is important to acknowledge that like there is some value, you know, value to incumbency or whatever, and try chasing to try and like get rid of any advantage is likely just going to cause a lot of it's going to be confusing for people. And I think at the end of the day, you're going to, you're just going to end up having a lot of alders misstepping accidentally on things that maybe technically aren't included, but nobody are actually suspicious of or anything else. And it's going to be, this, I think, introduces staff into a role of they have to then be confident that it's meeting these criteria. So there's like this extra sort of sensor layer, which I think just, I think on the blogs is just not a good idea. I think that's, I think it needs to be a like making a Facebook post. That's in practice how it is. People subscribe, unsubscribe. I think it should be treated as one message and not 50. So I would be inclined to just leave the blog alone, honestly, and really focus on not camp, not using city resources and those, um, you know, for campaigning or for other purposes all the time, you know, that we that we have in place and just keep it simple for people because I think it's just too confusing to do that. I think that the postcard notifications are already restricted down to just the specified purposes, which makes sense. I think it's good not to allow alders to do mailings of more than 50 pieces on random stuff. So I I think that's already covered, maybe um, attorney house can just confirm that. And the the place that I think if we're going to try and prevent misuse of position to me would maybe be like calling meetings, like having virtual meetings or, you know, sort of, I'm hosting a meeting to talk about random topic that might be of interest to people, but is like, that seems like a something I'd be willing to support, trying to prevent that I could see happening. You know, not using city resources for for that kind of stuff. But I just, I guess I worry, we can, we can add some more exemptions in here. But um, I don't want to have like, here's two weekly updates that staff are preparing. One, that's for people that can share the stuff we all want to share and aren't, um, you know, aren't running. And then here's a, here's a skinny down version for everybody else. I just, I think there's, I think the public good is lost in it too much. So that's, I think that's where I'm at with it right now.
Appreciate that, Al Falster. I do, I'm going to clarify, I mean, you know, my, my, my intent very much is to avoid the exact meeting situation that you talked about. You know, I'm I'm a big fan of housing first and, you know, or, uh, you know, or not housing, you know, housing forward, wherever, whatever the city sorry calls it. And I'm running for reelection and I think it's a good idea to get a bunch of people from planning staff to have a meeting with me and my residents to talk about all the success we've had with affordable housing and rezoning, et cetera. How do we avoid using that? I mean, that's not an emergency, that's not a pending topic unless, you know, it's a piece of legislation that's in front of us. I I definitely think that's been my focus with with going down this route is trying to make it clearer, clearer guardrails for people so they're not um, questioning whether or not, you know, a housing forward meeting is appropriate or not. And so, you know, rewording it, whether or not it's on the blog or not, or just the, you know, very specifically, the use of city resources, city staff to help you, you know, educate people on topics that are not, um, you know, pending matters, I think is probably the biggest deal, the, at least in my opinion, because I, we know, we know incumbency is incredibly powerful and and it's very, very hard to to mute that. But we shouldn't do things to superpower, give people additional superpowers with their incumbency. Um, and so I'm I'm absolutely open as the the only sponsor of this to figuring out ways to 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 at least get that point across clearer that it really has to do with using city staff and city resources to campaign. But what, you know, I think examples help, obviously.
Well, so that was me, so I I'd be happy to, I'd like to just think on a little bit more. Maybe that would help me too, if I had more time to process it. But one thing I was going to ask is could we do, I mean, there were some examples provided of of like current or recent things that might not be allowed. I I don't know how much time it would be, but like looking back over the last year or so and like getting a better list so that we really know if we're going to agree to this, like what all has to sort of be different. Um, and maybe, and maybe we could write in broader, I mean, maybe, maybe it would help us focus in on on the thing that we're really trying to prevent. So I'd be open to just doing a little bit more, like looking at that. And I I think there's a path forward. I I think I see where you're going with it. And yeah, maybe, maybe it is also around this like staff time and meetings kind of thing, more than like blog posts. Um, and then the last thing I'll say is just, um, I know with this one included, um, like mayor, but then and like our mayor's blog or something. But then also, you know, I mean, if we're going to be serious about it, we should also take a a hard look at at that and sort of resources that are available to a mayor, you know, and through staff resources. And, you know, is the city of Madison Facebook page, who's actually, you know, what what stories are showing up there when, you know, I I mean, there's, if if we're going to be serious about it, I think we should just do a pretty good deep dive down that side of it as well. Because there's a lot of value or a lot of power in that incumbency in campaign season.
Absolutely, I think, you know, I I I'd like to also see us try to get something done. Now that we're in campaign season, I think so, you know, the broader we make it, the harder it is going to be to actually be able to provide people with guidance. But don't disagree with you that that the mayor as well is is certainly a big question mark when it comes to this stuff. Uh, Alder Bennett, go ahead.
I think my hand goes up from earlier.
I think my hand goes up from earlier.
Oh, okay. Um, uh, Alder Vitterver.
Hey. Wait, there. Um, so I wanted to go back to something Alder Foster said sort of at the beginning of this conversation, which was about that it might be easier to say what's not allowed than what is allowed. Um, and I just, you know, to share my perspective as a person who's a state employee, has been for many years, I am hammered into the ethics code all the time. Like, I have to do all these annual refresher things. I, I feel like it's common sense at a certain point of what is appropriate and what is not appropriate with government resources. So to me, I, I would think it would make more sense to be able to say, you may not use city resources to campaign. For example, you may not, you know, publicize campaign events. You may not publicize, uh, listening sessions unless they are related to a pending topic. Um, you may not, um, I, I, and going back to what Alder Heck talked about, I actually don't think we should be using our blogs for opinions, period. Um, that's my personal opinion. Because they're city resources, right? And so they really should be information sharing and providing context. Um, you might have opinions about context, but when you share that, you are already skewing public opinion and your opinions may actually not always be in relation to true information. So I think that, you know, being able to be clear about sharing inform, that the purpose of these modes is to share information with our constituents about upcoming city-related matters or ongoing city-related matters and make it very simple. That's my opinion.
Appreciate that, Alder Vitterver. I've been struggling with exactly what you said. Because for me, you know, I was telling somebody earlier, I come from Jersey. We, we very clearly knew what the lines were there because people were getting arrested all the time for crossing the lines. Um, and so for me, you know, it was drilled in early when I got involved in the community. Um, you know, here are the things that are acceptable or not. And I think there's just a lot of, um, uh, hard, there are a lot of unclear gray lines here. So, uh, Alder Wickley, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I think, you know, Alder Foster and Alder Vitterver said, my hope is we have a clear path in what's allowable and what's not allowed. And particularly, uh, if there is, uh, totally, I agree that, you know, we shouldn't be campaigning. But there are some exceptions that we can be able to put forward. For example, let's say, you know, now is the winter time, and if we have, uh, streets able to communicate in terms of large items or snow removal and all that, I think we can be able to communicate that through our constituency rather than thinking that we are campaigning. The other piece also is like public safety. For example, if there has been some, uh, auto theft, you know, some kind of, you know, having an alert for the community, how we can be able to communicate. So I think there is some, you know, um, a reason for restricting this, but also we cannot restrict our work because we will be, we will not be able to do, we will not be able to do our job properly by not able to communicate with our constituents. So I think maybe having the list of what not to do and what to do, it, it will help, uh, way forward. Thank you.
Alder, a question for you. So you'd like to see not just, you'd like to see a list of both. So you don't want to see, I'm allowed to do this, or I'm not allowed to do this. You want to see what I'm allowed to do and what I'm not allowed to do. So you want as much, as much definition as possible in a policy?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Other, other questions, thoughts? Uh, um, Alder Madison.
I just want to echo the list on the four, like what you can and cannot, because as someone who just a couple of months in, and I'm so used to just going out and, you know, getting things done and then being limited. For example, I'm dealing with the issue in one area of my district where there's a bunch of dumping, and it's just been a long, you know, an issue over the last year. And so where my natural instinct is to inform the immediate neighbors around, like, you know, here are how you actually go about getting your things picked up and that sort of thing. So yes, having a more clarified list of, these are some, you know, some of the things you can do and some of the things you can't will absolutely be beneficial for me.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, Alder Carter.
Thank you, President. I think, I, I agree with what I've heard thus far. But I also think that, um, when there is something that happens in your district, um, I'll just take my district, for example. Um, there was, uh, shots fired, uh, on a major street in my district. I would like to at least acknowledge that on my blog, which I did not do because we're in campaign season. But I think that's something for some of us, not all of us have those issues in their district. But for some of us, it would be nice to be able to at least acknowledge it to, on our blog. I agree that our blog should be really restricted to city, um, events and information. Um, it's cleaner that way. Um, and it provides our, our constituents with a broader knowledge of what the city is doing, regardless of what area it is in. Uh, I would take, for example, when the, um, has nothing to do with today, but metro redesign meetings were in different areas and providing them with all those dates so they can fit it into their own schedule.
Alder Carter, can I just ask you a quick clarifying question? When you say acknowledge shots fired, do you mean letting, giving, linking to a police report or actually talking about the problem, talking about solutions to the problem or what it means? I mean, can you be a little bit more specific?
Well, no, I'm not, oh, am I on?
Yeah, you are.
Oh, okay. I'm not talking about solutions to the problem. I'm talking about acknowledging that this happened on such and such a street. Um, the police, you know, I'm just ad libbing at this point, are doing what they're supposed to do and then linking them to, um, the reports, uh, website.
That's helpful.
But not talking about how to solve it and, you know, whatever. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, Attorney Haas, go ahead.
Thanks. I, I think that's a great example. We were talking before. I mean, if you, if you include in there, the police are investigating this incident, does that count as something pending before a city agency? And, and these are the questions that we would get, and I appreciate that Alder Carter has not asked us to answer that one yet. Um, so are there ways to, when, when an event happens, to frame it so that it would count under something pending before a city agency?
I agree with that. But that's the problem with ad libbing. Thank you.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to solve from here.
Right. And, and, you know, we, we would prefer not to, like, get into specific editing of all their blogs to say, this is what you can and can't say.
Thank you both. Uh, Alder Bennett.
Yeah, I mean, I, in my opinion, I, um, think that we have different, that it's okay that, like, different Alders have different forms that they want to use their blogs. Um, the way that I use my blog and the way that I govern might be different than some of, you know, than, than other people. I personally find value in being able to share, um, different issues, how, um, I, being able to see how other Alders are, are viewing this issue before going to council. Um, and I think constituents find that, that as, find, can find value in that as well. Um, and I don't necessarily think that it, it will sh, I, I, I may, maybe, I think that constituents are smart enough to build their own public opinion on something, whether, where an Alder is coming from. But I don't want to box Alders, and, and I shouldn't just say Alders, but, um, elected officials in the city in, oh, in how this one-sided view of how we should use our blogs, because the way one Alder may govern in the way the other Alder may govern is, might be completely different.
Certainly, um, Alder, but there, there is a campaign law that we're trying to not violate, and we're trying to provide people with some sort of level of guidance, um, and, and have some sort of policy. Um, and so that's kind of the complication. We're trying to figure that, we're trying to figure out what the best path forward is so that Attorney Haas isn't every other day trying to make a decision about what an Alder wants to do, whether it's a meeting or a blog post or, you know, postcard or whatever it is. Um, you know, some of that's already been clarified, but I think we, we are, we are seeing a lot of people, because exactly what you said, people, you know, do these things different. We're seeing people struggle with trying to figure out what's appropriate and what's not. Um, I, you know, I've heard examples tonight that are no brainers for me. Alders should be publicizing. And I've heard examples tonight to me that are just completely unacceptable use of city resources during campaign period. Um, and so, you know, how can we, uh, as a council, provide Alders with, with better guidance uh, based on the law, um, having our own policy? And, and that's, that's the struggle. I have not thrown out that question yet. Um, that's kind of been the underlying question is what's our path forward? But at some point, I'm hoping that people can, you know, give, give some additional suggestions on how we can resolve this, knowing that we're, we're on, it's December thirteenth, um, campaign season started December first. Um, you know, it, it ends in April. Um, you know, we don't want to pass something late March because that's completely unhelpful. Um, but we also don't want to rush something because we want people to, you know, feel, feel more comfortable with what they're doing. Um, and again, the state has done us no favors. Um, so hopefully that helps. And we'll, we'll continue talking about this for the next, uh, next few minutes. So thank you. Uh, Alder Figaro Cole, go ahead.
Just want to again to kind of center ourselves back into the discussion. This is just during the campaign season, because I couldn't agree more about putting, creating a policy of limitations on our different methods of blogging for the rest of the year. So just want to kind of come back that this is just during the campaign season. That's what this, this particular, um, um, resolution is about.
Yeah, absolutely. That is what this resolution is about. I think Alder Vitterver did mention, you know, as a state employee, it's really drilled into her what ethics are, and because it's drilled into her, um, she, she feels like it's common sense to her. And to me, I, I agree with her that, that some of this comes down to common sense. So I, I, you know, I, I don't think we should get law, you know, I don't want to go down the rabbit hole completely of, you know, overall. Um, but, you know, I think we need to be thinking about what's appropriate, um, you know, at least for campaign season for now. Alder Bennett.
Uh, just a question. So who is going to be enforcing this? Like, do we expect Attorney Haas to be looking at every single blog and every single Facebook post? Or do we expect that of city staff, the sergeant of arms, you, council president?
There, there is no enforcement that's part of this. I think this is intended to be a guide. Um, we continue when we run into things like this. I don't know if Attorney Haas wants to talk more about it. I mean, we have, you know, as a council, we can, we can take action against an Alder and, um, but, you know, enforcement of stuff like this is incredibly hard.
The, the only thing I would add is, I mean, two potential ways of enforcement is, you know, there is, the ethics code prevents Alders from using city resources for campaign purposes. And so for that piece of it, not the fifty piece rule, but for that piece of it, somebody could file a complaint with the ethics board. Or somebody could theoretically file, file a civil action, a law, a lawsuit, obviously. But there isn't any direct policing of it other than the complaint process.
Thank you both. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, two comments. One, uh, just in terms of timeline, I would say, um, I personally don't feel urgency around this, uh, specific candidate period and would much rather take, um, three months and get a final version of something in front of the council before the end of the term. That would be a good plan for the rest of time moving forward until somebody changes it. Um, you know, we, there was, there was not an understanding or enforcement of, uh, fifty piece rule for, you know, as long as anybody can remember, up until, um, we, we got somebody who informed us that it was there. We had a real abrupt face and, you know, s- felt what that was to be under the, 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 the version of that at the state and then worked to exempt ourselves right now for blog, um, and for these postcards, for these purposes. I would totally be fine with letting that go this season and seeing wh- what that looks like. And again, looking back into the past before we had any more restrictive guidance, what, did, can people find evidence of things that they felt were inappropriate, that were, that were crossing this line and focus there? Um, so anyways, I'm not, I'm not feeling the same urgency, I guess, about getting something done quick so that it applies now. And part of my lack of urgency, I want to clarify, my understanding again is that right now, Attorney Haas, you're not in a position where you need to make decisions about what is okay or not. The fifty piece rule still applies, uh, campaign ethics stuff still applies all the, you know, to us. But right now, we can, a blogs will, will be sent out automatically without any censorship or review from staff, period. If we were to adopt something like this, that would actually create the need. There's no enforcement of it, but it says staff are directed to do this when it meets these conditions. So then assumedly council staff or IT staff would be via this resolution responsible to not allow a post to go out if it didn't meet the criteria. Or, I mean, it sets that expectation up in my mind the way I'm reading it. And certainly, somebody's gonna be offended by something, is gonna bring it to whoever those staff people are, including the attorney, and say, we don't think this is. And so it's going to set up an enforcement mechanism, even if there's no consequence other than removal of the post or something, where that is not, that is not the case right now. So I just, I, I want to clarify that that's my understanding, and that's why I would also be more cautious about recreating some new restrictions that also implicate staff, because I don't think they are implicated right now.
Alder, you did hear Alders tell you this evening that they're, they're, they're confused and guidance would be helpful, though.
Well, yeah, but guidance, this is a resolution that's actually has like, this is, this is more than guidance, I think. And the, and what I heard from a lot of folks is, and I didn't attend that meeting, but this is a super complicated thing. I get why people are really nervous, but there's a lot of misunderstanding around what is in, in play right now. This proposal is fundamentally changing some of those things, and I agree. I feel like folks are not really understanding the current conditions super well. And so that also gives me pause to try and push through changes to it if we're not really even understanding what applies right now and how this would change that, because it's, it's just brand new. Um, this is the first campaign season that we are now under fifty piece rule and under the adopted resolution that exempts the blog from that.
Thank you. Attorney Haas, is there something you want to reply to specifically, but before I let Karen speak?
Um, just, just quickly, I, I, I do agree, Alder Foster, the only thing I would add is, um, you know, we, we receive questions from Alders, is this okay to post? And they're expecting some guidance. Now, if the council says, you know, there, there are no restrictions, and I guess it makes it easier for us. And what I would advise Alders is, then if it's the least bit questionable that somebody could argue this was a campaign communication, then they're on their own. Um, uh, and, and, you know, just so that everybody understands that, I, all I can do is point out what the law is, and then they can make their own decisions. But, but it, it would, it would not necessarily stop the questions that we receive.
Yeah, no, that, thank you for that response. And I, I think that makes sense to me. And I think it's actually, you know, we're talking about like onboarding and like Alder support stuff. But I think every, you know, every campaign season, there should be a version of it. Maybe every year it gets better. You know, here's the one-on-one around what, how to, you know, if you're running, here's what to think about and how you're using it. But, and, and a lot of that could be baked into there, and you can still answer people's questions or give, you know, whatever. I think all of that makes a lot of sense, but that to me is very different than really, like, very, like, very much modifying the, the current ordinance, uh, or the current resolution that allows, that, that puts that, that keeps the responsibility, I guess, on the Alder. And so now if an Alder could transgress fifty piece or campaign ethics, they can still do that. But it's not, it's not putting city staff in a position to technically only release these automated messages if these criteria met. It would, I mean, it would technically require screening of the content, which is not even feasible because these are automated emails that go out for the blog. So it's, it basically just creates a scenario that somebody can complain about after. And then there's no consequences. So it's just, I don't know, it's, it's not, I'm not sure it's gonna. Yeah, I'll stop there.
Thank you. Thank you both. Uh, Karen, go ahead.
Thanks. A couple of things I wanted to raise from our perspective, um, in the office. Thanks. A couple of things I wanted to raise from our perspective, um, in the office. So, and Debbie's here, so she can also, if she disagrees with me, chime in. We have some, we have had some questions about blog posts. Um, and then especially, you know, in light of this potential resolution, we talked a little bit about, you know, we started to ask some questions to kind of clarify the, the impact of this resolution. But I think the big concern, one of the big concerns that we're having is the question of what meetings are considered appropriate uses of city resources? For folks can't, who are running the, um, and Debbie can speak a little bit more to the past practices, um, from when, before I was here. And when Lisa Veldren was in charge of this, from what I understand, she actually was quite strict about what, not just what communications could go out, but what meetings could be held during this period. And so, and it's in the policy guide. And by, back then there wasn't the social media and there wasn't as, you know, it, it was harder to hold a meeting if you couldn't blog about it and you couldn't send, you know, like. And so a lot of times it just solved itself. Like if you couldn't send 50 postcards about it, or if you couldn't, you know, then you couldn't really have it. Um, we're not in that situation anymore. And especially with the, um, relaxation of the restrictions on the blogs. It raises a larger question because, for example, one of the issues that was arising, uh, was, well, okay. So according to this, uh, the, the, the resolution you all passed, um, you could have a meeting. And if you use 49 or fewer pieces to, to advertise that meeting, you could have it on whatever, as long as it wasn't like blatantly like a campaign meeting. And, um, Attorney Haas had talked in a previous presentation about the case law there, right? And what has been called out as clearly violations in terms of campaigning, but it was very, it seemed to be very bold in that regard. And so, but if you wanted 50 or more pieces and it wasn't about land use or alcohol licenses, then you had to come to CCEC for approval to send out 50 or more pieces. Um, but it didn't dress, address the question of whether the meeting itself is an appropriate use of resources. So in the past, it was sort of handled together. Um, and then we also found out that the policy guide, what hadn't been ratified by the full council. So it wasn't necessarily as tight, like as binding as we had thought it was. And so then questions came up because Alders don't want to do the wrong thing. So then there are questions about, is this meeting that I want to have, I don't need to send 50 pieces, you know? Are there any guidance on, is this meeting allowable? And there, and Debbie will be receiving meeting requests between December 1st and April 4th that she's going to have to help people with. And we don't want to give people poor advice, wrong, you know? We want to be able to help people understand where their lines are. And I think there's just differences of opinion as to where the status quo lines are being drawn.
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate that perspective. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, I, um, my instincts are similar on all of this. I think it's, I think there's something to it. I, this is the thing I called out, right? Is there's, it's the space where I think we could, you could get more people agreeing. That's probably something that doesn't need to happen during campaign season for somebody that's campaigning, a sort of meeting that's not related to some thing. But even that, like in, back in the day, it wasn't just the postcards, it was, we didn't have virtual meetings. So a meeting, uh, like a meeting with city resources also meant actually like renting a room, getting the PA equipment, like all of the stuff. And so I think there was also more clear that that's, I think everybody just accepted and there wasn't really a lot of question of, yeah, that's not cool to do a meet and greet. Um, you know, during campaign season and so that, but I, in a virtual climate, the, you know, it, it's going to be, I think it's fine. I mean, I think we could, we could, we could maybe do that, right? Like not use the city, um, Zoom accounts or something. But realistically, like, you know, you can have a mate, you can host a meeting for free, um, as a, you know, and not use that. So that's something we could pursue, but I would not, my suggestion is that Debbie should not feel. That she, that she has to screen meeting purposes right now, um, and into this campaign season, because we haven't prohibited that. We didn't, like you said, we didn't speak to that. And at this point, use of the city Zoom license to hold a ostentатель, you know, it still can't be used for a campaign purpose. That part's covered year round. Are we going to further try and restrict it? Has to be for a really good reason. Because then, you know, well, we've got Alders that are holding, uh, uh, meetings with staff resources on a bunch of stuff that is pending. That could also, that's also, you know, potentially they're doing that now because it's a way to get out there. So there's like, there's just so many topics that you can, that you could still qualify is where I feel like it's, we can't prevent people from, from doing some of this stuff. And if we try, we're gonna, I, I think it's just going to get confusing. So my opinion on the same, on this part is let's not try and regulate or ask city staff to make these decisions until unless we've actually thought through them and, and pass something very clear.
Think that's what we're trying to do with this is pass something, but I, we, there clearly isn't enough clarity there. Uh, Alder Bennett, go ahead.
Sorry, this discussion about meetings got me thinking as well. I don't really have a fully formulated opinion on it yet. But I was just wondering, like, if, if there is any language about what is or isn't, isn't appropriate to talk about as, at meetings? Not even if an alder is hosting a meeting, but what if someone like I, um, I can point to an example, but I won't. Of like, you know, a, a, an elected official attending a meeting in the pa- capacity as an elected official, like they were invited in their capacity. At, in their position, but then basically giving a campaign speech, you know? So like, how, like, is there any ling- any language that, about what is or is not appropriate? When we're showing up to meetings in the capacity as like our, in the capacity of our positions, but then using that capacity to campaign? Like, what if someone shows up to a neighborhood association meeting as an alder, but then it's just basically using that to campaign?
Attorney Haas, do you want to talk about the ethics of that? I mean, I.
Yeah, uh, uh, you know, that, that's not a city meeting. That's not a use of public resources. I think they're free to say whatever they want when they're appearing in front of private organizations.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to clarify that because I've, I don't know if I'm, I don't, I'm not going to go into it, but thank you. I mean, I just, actually it will, just because, um, I feel like that should be clarified too. Cause I, I recently attended a meeting in an alder and I'm like, should I like talk about the candidacy or not? I don't know what is or is not appropriate to talk about in this meeting.
So Ald- Alder Bennett, my suggestion, I mean, I, I, you know, Alder Ha- Attorney Haas made it clear, like, you know, it's not using public resources. I think establishing it with an organization, I've never, I've been very cautious about that when I've gone to neighborhood associations, when they've invited me during campaign season. Cause I feel like you're abusing their trust by, if you just, you know, show up and be like, oh, by the way, I'm running for reelection, vote for me and here's why. I think just establishing the ground rules early on with that organization, you know, would you like me to camp? Is it okay if I made a pitch for my campaign here? Or are you just inviting me as a public official to talk about, you know, just a general update? Um, but I, but I really do think that's a one-on-one conversation with that organization. And, and then just your own gut call on whether or not you think it's appropriate after that. If, you know, if they say, do what you want, I, I, for me, you know, I think, uh, you know, I've, I've had that issue in neighborhood associations during election time. And I've, I've, I've actually invited my opponent to those meetings just to say, hey, um, you know, would you, would you mind giving them a few minutes just to introduce themselves? You know, because you're giving me an opportunity to talk about stuff and, and that's worked out quite well. But, you know, I, I think it's just establishing those baselines with those organizations if you're not using city resources. Hopefully that helps.
Yeah, that does. Thank you.
Yeah, Alder Heck.
Thanks. Uh, I was, uh, you know, the more I hear about all of this, I, I'm, I'm leaning more towards what Alder Foster had to say. You know, we, we can't, uh, make a comprehensive list of what's allowed or what's not allowed or both. We, we really, I think, have to assume that Alders will do the best they can and some will do better than others. And some may even have, uh, nefarious purposes for what they're doing on their blogs. But you know what? Uh, we have to kind of assume that folks are, are going to generally do what they should. And, uh, you know, I think it's clear already that sometimes that's not the case, but I'm not sure we can police this, uh, at this point. And I do think that the, the thing that Karen will talk about in her staff update that about social media. That isn't, that is and isn't, uh, a city, a city resource will help a little bit. It doesn't solve this particular problem, but it might help with people differentiating, uh, what's a good idea and what's not. You know, Alders can talk to each other too, if they don't want to bother staff. Is this okay, do you think? And they don't have to take anybody's advice. I also had the wild, uh, idea that an alder who isn't running for election could be the information czar and decide, uh, uh, like a judge on what could be posted. But I'm not volunteering for that. It was a joke, Karen, don't worry.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Alder Heck. Alder Carter, go ahead.
I would, uh, excuse me, I was just going to say that, um, it, it would be prudent for us if we are invited to meetings. To find out upfront what the expectation is versus finding out when you get there.
That's helpful advice. Thank you, Alder Carter. Uh, Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you. I, um, it looks like discussion's wrapping up a little bit. There's a break in it. We could probably keep talking for three hours on this. But, um, I think just in the vein of, um, not rushing it, I would make a motion to, um, place on file without prejudice at this time.
Is there a second? Thank you, Alder Bennett. Uh, we can discuss that motion or we can just vote on it? Is there any discussion?
I, I would just like to, I will say a little, I, I do, um, I think it's, I mean, just the amount of discussion here, the amount of questions, and I'm sure there's a lot more here. I do think this should be on the, the radar for staff as a, you know, absolutely, uh, every two years or every campaign season. Opportunities for sort of re-education questions, all that. And I, and I think I am also open to looking and continue to look at making sure we can put guide rails where they, where they make sense. And maybe this, the, the question about meetings is a place, um, that deserves some further looking into. So, um, but yeah, I, I, I think that, I appreciate the, that it was brought up and I appreciate, uh, all the conversation around it.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Um, I, I would ask if Attorney Haas and Karen can also consider looking at, um, you know, Alder Vitterver brought up, you know, state ethics training and stuff like that. If there's any sort of better ethics training that we can get as Alders, we actually don't get much ethics training. But one of my favorite moments, uh, being involved as alder is, um, uh, Alder Heck being, uh, quoted in the newspaper complaining about not being able to let friends buy a beer. Um, and so there have been discussions and orientations in the past. But I do think, you know, if there's anything we could learn from state orientation, um, maybe, maybe that would be helpful, um, or state ethics, uh, training. Um, Attorney Haas, go ahead.
Well, a, a couple of things. I mean, uh, on that point, uh, you know, of course we do do our ethics training as part of the alder orientation. And our ethics code in some respects goes beyond the ethics code that is in, in the state statutes for local public officials. You know, we can certainly look at the, some of the resources that they have on their website. But, um, I was just going to also mention, if this is placed on file, then I think the way we would interpret that is that. There are not any specific restrictions on what can be posted, at, at least that we are supposed to weigh in on unless they're blatantly a campaign statement. Um, and also there are not restrictions on the topics of meetings that Alders can host. And that, and that we're really all relying on the complaint process. If, if somebody believes that an alder has gone too far, it's incumbent on, on them to bring a complaint.
Alder Foster, you raised your hand. I don't know if you want to address that.
Yeah, I just, just to clarify, my understanding would be that the, I, I think you kind of said this, but that the, 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 all the existing sort of ethics code. Use of city resources for purpose, et cetera, that apply the rest of the year all still apply. That there just would not be any additional restrictions around use of blog or city meetings during, uh, campaign season.
And, and we would also not be deciphering whether, what, you know, whether an alder was merely doing alder business. Or whether they were trying to get their name out there for campaign purposes. Again, as long as they're not mentioning their campaign and asking people.
Not any more than you would do at, in June, um, if somebody put something blatantly not city business related or campaign related, even if it's not during the campaign period. So it's the same, the same bar that you would review as any other time of the year.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, Attorney Haas, I want to make a clarification though. You talked about the state trying to get things done before they enter campaign season. Um, what are their lines there though, based on state law? I mean, do they, are there, is the state law pending, pending, you know, state business or, I mean, or is that more surrounding the 50 piece rule?
That was referring to the 50 piece rule. So, you know, traditionally they even, these days they rely on sending out monthly or quarterly newsletters. And, and that was always the big topic was when can we get the last newsletter out? And other than that, you know, they can post things on their social media pages, but they're, they're just, and, and there is an exception. If there's a special session of the legislature called during the election period, then they can send out communications about that. But otherwise they're not permitted to send out mass mailings about state business during the election period.
So they can't even send out it. We're, we're, we're obviously letting people still send out things, but the state doesn't do that. And then, and, but if, if I'm a, if an assembly person or a state, you know, state senate person, can I, can I have the DNR come into my district and hold a meeting about how to get a fishing license?
You, you can, I think you can ask the DNR to do it, but that would be a DNR hosted meeting then.
So if I invite the DNR to my, but if I'm holding the meeting and inviting the DNR, it would be, then all of a sudden be considered a DNR meeting?
The, is under the, the focus for the state under the 50 piece rule is, are you going to send out more than 49 invitations? And they would, they would say you cannot, you can, you can hold the meeting.
Sure. But what about using then? So then the other thing that we've, we've debated and talked about tonight, what about using, you know, uh, government resources to campaign? How, how would that be handled?
Yeah. And, you know, the, the, the courts are really, in the campaign finance area, they really restricted what it means to be campaigning. And you really have to be saying, vote for me, don't vote for the, the other person. And other than that, there is no firm rule. So it would be somebody we would be required to really make a case that merely by doing state business. And holding these meetings, that's, that, that's an inappropriate use of public resources. I think that's, that's kind of a stretch. I think it's also at the state level, probably easier for agencies to say to an, to an elected official. You know, this is an appropriate use of our staff resources, or it is not an appropriate use than it is maybe for city agencies to say to an alder. This isn't in our plan to dedicate staff. Now, I think they may feel obliged to, to, uh, agree to a request from an alder more than a state agency would necessarily.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Haas. Any other, um, discussion about the motion that's before us? Karen, go ahead.
Just want to, just get, just hammer on this a little bit, Attorney Haas. So for example, I think I had heard an example floated about, for example, pumpkins, putting your pumpkins in your, in your yard waste. Or, you know, uh, something where, you know, public works, there's something, then there's a lot of confusion, a lot of confusion among residents about some program. Let's say it's the pumpkin program for the sake of this discussion. And, you know, an alder would normally in non-campaign season not have any qualms about, you know, offering a, a meeting where somebody from the pumpkin program comes and kind of clarifies. Like, okay, yeah, yeah, you can do this, you can't do that, whatever, right? And so from what I'm hearing, and that's just, you know, that's city business as, you know, per the conversation about how we, the city continues to do its business during election season. Is that, that's the sort of thing I would imagine we, you know, will see a lot of between now and April as city business continues. So what I'm hearing from you is there's nothing in the state law that addresses that type of situation that it's, you know, I, I just want to get clear because we do, we do get questions and, and, you know, we want to make sure that we're giving accurate advice.
Attorney Haas, you're muted.
Thanks. I think that the pumpkin rule, I think you conveyed it correctly, Karen. You know, this whole notion about communications related to pending city matters really originated with the old CCOC and a motion that that committee adopted as a predecessor to this committee. But we, we found is that that committee, like this committee, the ordinance says can recommend, make recommendations to the council about city policies, but they have to be adopted by the council. And it appears that that was never adopted. So that's really been the genesis of this pending city matters. That really doesn't fall under the state statute.
Any other discussion? Unless I see otherwise, I will assume approved by unanimous consent. All right, I apologize. We do have a bunch of other somewhat intense discussions this evening. We will do our best and possibly refer stuff. But our next item is legislative file seven, five, one, one, eight. The District 12 vacancy, a discussion about the District 12 vacancy. Wanted to give people an update on where we are and my interpretation, having spoken to Attorney Haas on paths forward and, and kind of how we got where we got. Obviously, we're all aware that our colleague, former colleague resigned the end of November and left us with a vacancy. My, my reading and understanding of the ordinance was that I needed to, as council president, set up a process to fill that vacancy, and I have done that. We've advertised the vacancy. We have accepted applications. The deadline was four thirty today. And before today, we had one application and now we have four applications. So we got three additional applications today. Three of those people, two of those people are actual registered candidates for the position. One of those people did indicate that they would absolutely be running. So that's, that's, you know, number three said they'd be running and the fourth person said they wouldn't run. I do not feel it was appropriate when the vacancy opened nor now to make any sort of decision about filling the vacancy. But did want to open up the discussion to CCE, see whether or not we thought it was appropriate to, to, to make a recommendation, knowing that, you know, we just had a whole, whole discussion about the power of incumbency. And we've seen through vacancy filling that incumbency is incredibly powerful. Yep. What are, what are people's thoughts on, on the best path forward? Alder Foster.
Thanks. I, I know there's been different opinions on this over the years. When I first came on, there seemed to be this general rule that you wouldn't like, you don't want to appoint an interim person if they do plan to run. And then I think we kind of had conversations about that in a couple of different places. And that doesn't seem to be a primary criteria for consideration, at least the last few. But at this moment in time, I, I would much rather not. I feel uncomfortable choosing somebody. I think the, the benefits of appointing somebody in terms of, you know, that district, having somebody and having the seat filled for a couple of months when that's right in campaign season, it just doesn't make, doesn't make me feel great. So I would be of an opinion at this point, I think, to not recommend an interim appointment and let voters do that and have them have whoever to start in April.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Alder Bennett, go ahead.
Um, I will say right, as of right now, I kind of am more inclined to appoint someone. And just pointing to an example is there's a development in District 12 that, you know, they were like, we have no alder to represent us right now. But I was thinking, do you think that we could make an appointment after the filing deadline and specifically like, and specifically ask for those people to not, to just be filling the interim seat and not like, after the filing deadline, then just have people that obviously aren't running and that obviously haven't filed to fill that interim seat? Do you think?
Sure. So we, we can, why don't, I mean, I can, we can get into more of the ordinance. And, and, I mean, there's a very different process that, that is available. So, so I had, so we have the ability to reject the applications and ask for new applications again. So that's one thing we do have the ability to do, and that obviously sets a new timeline. And then there is an alternative option for filling the seat that goes into effect after petitions are due, which we can elect to use, which is, you know, very specifically not fill it, although we can also do that now. So it's a little bit confusing. We can ask for either a county supervisor that's in that area to apply or a former alder. You know, so there, there, there is some, some ability to, to, to do different things. It's whether or not we, you know, there's value in that, whether or not, you know, we as a body want to make a recommendation like that. But I think all, all the options would be on the table. And I'm obviously curious in hearing what people think we should do this evening. Attorney Haas, correct me if I made any sort of legally wrong comments.
No, I, I think that's correct. I think the, the, the short version is the council is free, free to leave the office vacant, can appoint somebody from the current applicants, wait until after the filing deadline, as President Furman indicated, and use the alternative procedure and seek applications from former members of the council or, or the county board who have not filed papers to run. I think those are the options.
Thank you, Attorney Haas. Alder Conklin.
Thank you, President Furman. Well, now that I know that that's an option, I think leaving the seat vacant is definitely my opinion. I had stated that before I knew that was an option. And two, I think I hear how you guys like to kind of shy away from bringing somebody in who said that they would run again. But just as easy as someone, it's just as easy as it is for someone to say that they're gonna run again. It's also easy for folks to say that they're not gonna run again and then turn around and do it, you know, because there's nobody really to stop you. So I, I don't think that in general, that should be a wavering, just a wavering factor on whether or not they want to run again. Just because honestly, what is four months? You know, that's not enough time to really be like, oh, they're incumbents and they're gonna use their power. They don't even know what their power is in four months. So that's just my opinion. But if I, if it was up to me, I say we leave it open and wait for the election.
Thank you, Alder Conklin. Alder Carter.
Yes, I just wanted to say that when there is a vacancy, at least when, prior to me joining the council and when I was president, that when there is a vacancy, the president can ask the, the bordering district alder to represent, I'm using that term loosely because I'm also tired, sorry. But to represent, to help with that District 12, since we're talking about 12. In addition to the president also helping with the, with the representation of District 12. That is something that I did when Donna Moreland abruptly resigned. And I asked Barbara McKinney because she bordered. And then I also helped until we obviously did the application process. That's one thing that you can do. I think at this time, with so little time left and the person has to get up to up and running in a short period of time, I think that we can also look at asking the supervisor that covers that district also. So all those things, it's a tough decision. But I, I do hesitate asking a candidate who's already declared to come in and be an alder for what, three months or four months, whatever.
So Alder Carter, I do want to clarify that there was a ordinance change in front of us in October. Looks like a file was created in October 14th, 2020, and the final action was on January 5th, 2021, dealing with an adjacent district helping with a vacancy. And that was defeated by the council that was actually not passed. So there is nothing in our code that actually, you know, I think what was, I know, because I opened it. What was proposed was when a vacancy is pending, the common council president may appoint an alder from a district adjacent to the district with the vacancy, who shall have the authority to exercise the duties of the office until the vacancy is filled by the appointment of the council or by an election. The appointed alder temporarily representing a vacant district may participate as a subunit assigned to the alder absent. So there was some sort of a, a, a attempt to do, do adjacent stuff. But absolutely, I will tell you, based on our, all the vacancies we'd have this year, I have asked alders in neighboring districts, current alders to help. And, and we have had that assistance and I've.
Wonderful.
Spent a lot of time, but, but appreciate that background and, and your opinion. Alder Madison, go ahead.
Thank you. So I think for me, I just have an extra two months added to the four months you all just mentioned. So it's not too long of a time. So I would, I don't, I don't have, I don't want to say I, I think you guys should do one way or another. But I do think that there needs to be someone, of course, representing it, whether it's a supervisor or one of us pitches it. I don't mind pitching in because I'm already helping for folks who know me outside of being alder and realize I was alder close by their house have reached out to me. And I don't mind, you know, sending them what they need or get their questions answered. But I also hesitate to sort of, I guess I don't see that it would be a bad thing or a negative thing or an alarming thing to appoint someone who may eventually run or, you know, run just because the person is already committed to add value to the, to the district or to the common council overall. So I'm a little, you know, that part is a little difficult for me to make a judgment about. But I do want to say that it shouldn't stay vacant period where no one is pitching in and is just sort of like out there because folks in that district are wanting some support in some things and do have questions about things that affect them, especially around speeding and crime.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Alder Madison. I do want to make it clear, I mean, his, his mailbox, the District 12 mailbox is being actively monitored by, by me. I don't, I don't want to speak for staff of whether or not they're going in there. But I promise you, several times a day, I am checking the District 12 mailbox and making sure that, you know, residents' concerns and questions, et cetera, are being passed to the appropriate people. Obviously, if they're sending it to all alders, every alder sees it. But, but we have not neglected that district. But, but, so I just want everybody to know that.
Yeah, no, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying more so, so folks in the district know they have like an identifiable person outside of email. Like, yes, that's really.
Sure.
Unless, unless the, unless his email list or 12's email list gets an email saying, hey, you know, our common council president is stepping up to, you know.
It does. So actually, yeah, there is, there is an auto reply that actually says, you know, the, this, 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 this alder position is, this alder is vacant. And in the meantime, you know, please contact the common council president or, or, or council office. And here's a number for, you know, both. So yeah, people are not being left high and dry. And it is being actively monitored. And, and I think if we had a longer vacancy, I'd probably be asking an adjacent alder to watch the email in addition to me. And so, yeah, we're trying to fill the void the best we can in the meantime, so.
I'm sorry, I did have, my initial reason for raising my hand is that, is what, what was sort of like shared with the applicants leading up to this process, would it, if something different happens, how that will look? Because they would, I would imagine they applied under some sort of idea or, you know, some sort of expectation for someone to be appointed? Or was it not relayed to them that this application pool will lead to an appointment?
At this, this vacancy was dealt with like every other vacancy we've had this year. And it was told people that we are looking for, to interview people for the vacancy. If the common council executive committee decides that they don't wish to, to make a recommendation of the council, I would reach out to, you know, those, those applicants and explain to them, you know, why we're doing what we're doing. And say, you know, hey, you know, it's, it's a unique period. You are not the first alder to be appointed in the October, November time period. But now we are, you know, mid-December. This person wouldn't be actually joining the council until early January. And we're in the middle of campaign season at that point. So it's just, it's, it's a weird period and that's why we're talking about it tonight is try to figure out the best way forward.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Alder Vitterver.
So essentially that was the same thing that I was going to bring up is that I, I feel a little bit like it would be a bait and switch. You publicly announce this process, have candidates putting their information in, and then to suddenly say, oh, never mind. I, it feels disingenuous. And I, I, I don't think that there's an issue with, personally, I don't think that there's an issue with picking someone and then them having to go before voters because ideally everyone should be able to go before voters at any time. And so if they're in the position for a few months and somebody else comes along and says, they might be in the position, but I'm, here's why I'm actually better. And they make that case to voters, then so be it. So I would say continue the process that we're on regardless of how it benefits the person coming in.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just say one of my other reasons for not being excited about appointing somebody on, on this is it's definitely the campaign season and the sort of tipping the scales thing. But it's also just, it becomes a practical matter of like onboarding and getting up to speed and all of that. And so if, you know, if you're assuming, it's, I think that's why there's this caveat for like, if you're a former alder or supervisor or something like that, but having somebody who hasn't done that and then it's a lot of work that goes into bringing somebody up to speed. We just had an hour and a half conversation about what are the ethics rules for candidates during the campaign season? And that's all stuff that this new person assumed they would need to get like up to speed on. So I just, overall, I'm also worried about getting somebody reasonably up to speed with such little time left in the, in the term.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Alder Heck.
Thanks. I've, my thoughts have kind of evolved after hearing everybody's good points. You know, Alder Bennett mentioned initially, you know, development proposal in District 12, and people were saying they had no representation. And I, I don't really think that was the case, the, for that particular development proposal. Alder Abbas was super involved for months, years, and, and was just not there at the end. And I don't think that necessarily would have made much difference. I, I just tend to think that the more complicated aspects of being an alder, including dealing with development proposals in the district and all the many things about onboarding that we have talked about at our last meeting, do make it okay not to appoint somebody unless it's somebody with experience. And I, I, I do tend to think that somebody that, if there was somebody who had some experience, that, that it might be okay to appoint them as, as the, I guess carve out in the ordinance kind of implies. But yeah, I, I, I guess I'm, I'm leaning now towards not appointing anyone because I don't think, unless they had experience, they're not going to do anything other than answer email and try to figure out who, you know, the same things we all did when we first got elected. Who the heck am I supposed to be talking to about this? And they're not going to dive into any BCC work unless they have substantial background. So that's where I'm leaning. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Heck. Attorney Haas, if we obviously want to go ahead with interviews, I don't think there's anything this body needs to do. If we were going to decide that we were going to decline to appoint or we wanted to, to do a new search based on the applications or whatever. I mean, what's, what's the most appropriate way to handle that here this evening?
If you want to do something other than.
Then interviews.
Yeah, well, I, I think then probably the best thing would, if, if the, if this committee did not want to hold interviews, I think it would be best to have a motion to that effect so that you could notify the, the applicants.
Okay. And, and then we could also specify if we wanted to go out another round and, you know, ask, you know, ask the county, county supervisor. ask, you know, ask the county supervisor, this board can direct me to do that? Or do I, do we need to wait until January for that?
No, I think, I think you could start that process ahead of time, but I think the, the, just double check the.
Yeah, why don't I hear from Alder Bennett while you could look that up?
Okay.
Alder Bennett, go ahead.
I wanted to make a motion.
Let's wait on that a second, but I will, I will call you first before anybody else tries to do that. And Alder Foster, you obviously beat him to it. Alder Conklin, go ahead.
I guess I was going to wait and see maybe what attorney has that a little bit, because?
Sure.
I want to get those answers.
You know, so the alternative procedure says the council president shall seek applications from one to two persons who have been members of the council or the county board, and are residents of the district, and have not filed papers to run for the seat after the filing deadline. And then CCC reviews those applications and makes a recommendation to the council.
So in January, I could go, I can go forward with that alternative method if the seat is still vacant?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Alder Conklin, go ahead. As long as it's not a motion, I promise that to Alder Bennett.
I like what attorney has said. I think if, because I already told you, I already think we should leave it open, but if we think that someone should cover the seat, it should be someone who's already done it with experience that can just fill in for the time being. So that would be the avenue that I would vote for, is to leave the applicants and let them know, like, leave them alone, let them know that we chose to go a different route and have somebody with the experience covering District 12 for the time being. That's my vote.
Great. Thank you. Alder Bennett, go ahead.
Thank you. I actually do have one question and I'll make a motion.
Sure.
I was wondering if we do appoint someone, you know, someone with experience or someone that's a county supervisor, would they be appointed as a voting or non-voting member?
They would be appointed as a voting member.
Okay.
For being alder with all, all the power that is, comes to you as alder.
Yes, king of the district.
Or queen.
Or queen. Royalty. So I, I wanted to make a motion to move to not host interviews for this position next week.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Alder Conklin, is there discussion? Alder Foster, Alder Bennett, do you want to talk about your motion any more than you already have?
No, I, I just want to point out there that personally, I don't think it's appropriate to appoint someone based off of the people that have applied. However, I do think we need to appoint someone, because I, I think, I think it's beneficial for the constituents to have some sort of representation, even though it's not an ideal situation. But I don't think that, I think it would be irresponsible to just like let the seat hang out there in the wind. And, you know, and I, I think, you know, Keith, you are a busy person, you can't be handling everything, nor can the neighboring alder. So I think it's, it would be, it's important to appoint someone probably after the filing deadline, but not someone from our current pool.
Sure, but I want to specify, I mean, there is one individual on the pool that said they wouldn't run. Obviously, they still have the ability to do that until January 3rd, I believe it is. But there is one person that, that certainly wouldn't run. Is that somebody you want to, to not interview? I mean, you know, your, your motion just says we're not holding interviews, it's not saying that we're going to fill the position. So I don't know if that's something you want to, you know, clarify more. I mean, if we're not holding interviews, you know, and we get to that, that period in January, which I assume we would, I have the option as president to go with the alternative thing, which is to, you know, as attorney Haas said, look at, you know, county board, city council, former people in that area, and bring that to CCC or just not appoint. And so that would give me the ability to do that if we're in that period. But your motion is very specific on we're not holding interviews. If you want it to be more specific, more detailed than that, you know.
Well, I see.
Point of order, President Furman.
Sure.
None of us have seen resumes or know anything ostensibly about these candidates. I think the, there's not much that can be added to this motion beyond what's already been stated. We don't know anything about these candidates. We haven't held interviews.
That, that is true. Alder Heck, but I do, you know, if, if this body wants to give direction on what next steps are, though, other than not hold interviews, I think we need to be clear about that. I don't want there to be some sort of assumption that, you know, by not holding interviews, that means we're going with an alternative method, or we're definitely still going to fill it. I heard actually from a lot of people this evening that they don't want to fill it at all. So just want to make sure we know what we're voting on, and, and, and I, you know, I don't want to let people think I'm going in a particular direction because that's what they had in mind, but that wasn't what the motion was, so.
Keith, let me, I'm going to put my hand down. I probably will clarify later, but I see.
Okay. Thank you, Alder Bennett. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks. I wanted to amend the motion to try and help clarify, so mine would be to not hold the interviews, let the people that applied know, give the explanation, and also not, not, not recommend replacements, period. So not, not seek, not seek, yeah, you got it.
Is there a second for that, that amendment? Seconded by Alder Conklin? Okay, so now we've got an amendment on, on the table. Alder Foster, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, just briefly, just say, you know, I've heard two different versions of we should, it seems like nobody really wants to do Plan A. A bunch of folks said, let's just leave it empty. I think I'm still in that camp. And then the Alder Bennett, you know, may want to pursue the old version, so this is the way that we can do it. We can vote on this amendment, so, and then hopefully get there soon.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Any other discussion or questions on this amendment? I'm assuming we're going to want a roll call, because we have at least one person that may not agree with that. So Karen, would you mind calling the roll?
Okay, on the amendments.
Chair, could you just clarify the understanding for everybody too, just before we do that?
So this will be amending the main motion. So if this passes, the, this would be part of the main motion, that we would vote on the main motion, which would be not to hold interviews and not to fill the position. So this adds not filling the position.
This is just to add the amendment? Oh, sorry.
Yes, this is to amend the main motion.
So to amend.
Alder Heck, go ahead, before, before Karen. No, it's all right.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to, a brief just point of discussion. I suspect if we do not pass this amendment, we may end up in the same position in January, whether we do it or not, but I still think we should give it a try, so I won't be supporting this amendment. And, and will hope that somebody is interested that's a supervisor or former alder in January, although I don't think that's likely, so I won't be supporting this amendment.
Thank you, Alder Heck. I may ask you to amend the main motion if this one fails then with, with, with better direction. Karen, you can go ahead and call the roll on this amendment.
Okay, President Furman? Are you voting?
I don't, Attorney Haas, we have two people not here, two vacancies. Do I get to vote? Ours? How does voting work? If you could remind me, as chair.
Yeah, so the chair is to vote only if it would make a difference in the result.
So I'll come back then if it, if it so happens. All right. Vice President Curry is not here. Alder Bennett?
No.
Alder Bennett, it's a no. Alder Conklin?
Hi.
Alder Conklin, aye. Alder Figaro Cole?
Aye.
Figaro Cole is aye. Alder Foster?
Aye.
Alder Foster is aye. Alder Heck?
No.
Alder Heck is no. So we have two noes and three ayes.
Amendment passes.
If the chair wants to vote, no.
You should, you could vote in that case, because it could change the outcome potentially, right? The chair can vote.
Right, right. If the chair wishes to vote no, that would defeat the motion.
I guess I can officially, President Furman.
If the, if the. No, I understand.
It doesn't pass, and the chair can choose to vote, and then it would pass.
No, no. Isn't it?
It requires four votes to pass, and we only have three.
Does everything require four votes, or does it only require of the, a majority of those present?
He's still present, even if he's not, not, hasn't voted yet. So there's, there's six of us here, right? Right now? Majority is four, not three.
Six, yep, that's right. So if he, okay, yeah, I think, no pressure.
Yeah, no, I'm not going to vote.
Okay, with three ayes and two noes? Sounds like the motion fails.
Fails. So is there an alternative to direct looking at the possible?
Would the motion pass or fail?
It failed. I did not get enough votes. Alder Heck, go ahead.
I, I understand the intent, but I'll see if I can make this happen, that we, I move, well, we still have the original motion on the table, and, all right, now I'm getting confused.
Sure, but the original motion is very clear, we're not interviewing the current, current people, but gives no direction on what, what the future plan is.
And I would propose an amendment that, I mean, it seems to me that it doesn't need to be amended, because it would just follow the ordinance that the, that we would look for the, out of the pool of candidates that's mentioned in the ordinance after the filing deadline. So I guess, do I need to, uh, do I need to?
The president, don't do that. The president would prefer there be some direction from this body.
Okay, then I'll amend the motion requesting that the president follow the procedure and the ordinance for looking at the pool of candidates that's allowable after the filing deadline.
So the alternative vacancy filling option. Is there a second for, for that motion? Second, from Alder Figaro Cole, and Alder Heck, do you wish to speak to that more? Or do you feel, okay, Alder Bennett, go ahead. Actually, Alder Foster, were you, did you leave the queue and come back to the queue while you were after Alder Heck, but?
I'm in the, wherever I'm at, I'm, yeah, I was out and back in.
Alder Bennett, go ahead.
I'm, I'm wondering as, as well, could we provide communication that from this pool of applicants, we won't be appointing someone that is a candidate?
Alder Bennett, I would provide, I, I'm going to provide communication based on whatever we do tonight. I'm going to, I, I mean, you know, there is one person who said they wouldn't run, that, that person doesn't fall underneath the category of the alternative option. So, you know, I, I, you know, I don't think they would be eligible to, to, to be interviewed or, or CCC choice. I think the alternative option is pretty clear on where, where, where CCC should be looking for, for a candidate.
I'm sorry, and just, can you please bear with me and clarify for me? This promotion says that like someone that is a, that is running would not be considered.
Yeah, give me one second. Let me, let's, let's put this up so people can see this. So it's, it's clear what we're, what we're, we're working with.
Thank you.
No, this is, this is complicated, weird stuff. So here we go. So you guys should see my screen now, and there is for the filling of the vacancy, an alternative procedure, which we have talked about this evening. And it says if vacancy on the common council, if there's a vacancy and the timing for the filing notification papers for a spring election has passed and the spring election has not been held, the vacancy shall be filled by the procedure in this subsection. The council president shall seek applications from one to two people who have been members of the council or the county board, are residents of the district at issue, and have not filed papers for the seat. The common council executive committee will review the applications and make a recommendation of the council to fill the unexpired term until the spring election. The council may fill the seat with the recommended person or decline to fill the seat.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you, this helps. Thank you.
Yep. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks, just wanted to clarify that it won't be an issue and help set us up that this all can be communicated out in a clear way, you know, maybe even from our, like, council, whatever, that, I mean, my understanding is you're supposed to wait until this, the period has closed before you're doing the recruiting, but it would be, I think it would be helpful if we can be clear with the public, including future potential candidates, about this direction that's embedded in here, and that the intent and the expectation is that there will be then, that this will be happening, and that it could basically, I think, can start happening January, in January. Basically, can we also, can we, can we make it clear when we communicate this to everybody, what's going on? And can the recruitment period for this special candidate that the president's going to do, can that start right away? I, I understand it has to wait until the closing, but can we, can we give notice to folks that this is the expected, what's going to happen? And that we will, you know, expect to sort of take applications or whatever, starting once it's closed, with a goal of then bringing back that info to the, to the, you know, potentially the first CCC meeting in January? So in other words, I'm trying to make sure that you also have that explicit, that we, that we can give that clarity in public notification and ever, and help clarify what I think is going to be really confusing to a lot of people right now.
Attorney Haas, do you want to provide any guidance on when we can start the seeking applications from those individuals?
Yeah, I, I think that can be done right away, because the CC can say that the, the vacant, it did not make a recommendation, you know, without even reviewing the applicants, the vacancy is still going to then clearly exist after the filing deadline is over. And so, you know, that the city will attempt to fill the seat under the alternative procedure. There's no guarantee that you'll have those applicants, but that would be, you know, council's only choice at that point after January 3rd.
Okay, that's, I mean, that's, that sounds good to me. I think that's better than I just, I was reading it that you kind of had to wait to do that until it closed. I think obviously, we would want to, we would want to wait to make any recommendation until after the period is closed, just to avoid any, you know, potential that somebody would change their mind and file or something. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think I don't want to set any expectation that the seat is going to be filled. You know, I'm going to hope and pray that we have somebody that fits that criteria, that is willing and, and able to do it, to do this. But Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, just one other clarification. So this would be, I, I mean, I think the ideal scenario would be that then you come back to CCC with, here's the, here's what I've received in terms of applicants. And like, does this, this doesn't necessarily commit us to a round of interviews with them, and then the next step would be asking for direction from CCC of what to do with, you know, hey, we got one applicant, or we got three, or we got zero, or whatever, and then are you, or does this assume a certain path forward after the applications are received?
The ordinance has language saying still that the council can choose to leave the seat vacant.
It all, it says also that the common council executive committee will review the applications. And so it gives us the ability to, you know, look at them and say.
We don't have that interview.
But we don't have to do the interview if we get no applications, or if we get one application, you know, we can review it and decide we're going to do it. But obviously, the longer we wait, the harder it is to, to figure that out. So I'll work with Attorney Haas on, maybe there are other ways to, to speed that up. But I'm, I'm pretty sure knowing, you know, anybody who does this job, if there was a former alder or county supervisor that wanted to do this, they would have applied. I think they understand the difficult nature of appointing somebody at this point, and would have probably tried to help us out if they were in a position to do so. So I don't have a lot of hope that we're going to get anything there, but I'm happy to explore it. Any other discussion on the amendment on the table? Does anybody want a roll call on that amendment? Not seeing any, and I'm going to. Not seeing any, and I'm going to assume approval by unanimous consent. And now we have modified the main motion with that we will not interview people from the current pool and we will use the alternative procedure. And we will let people know of that. Any discussion or shall we assume unanimous consent to move on to our next item? Going to assume unanimous consent and move on to our next item. So we have a few more things left on the agenda. I really don't want to keep people until, you know, ridiculous hour. I think this body has had some intense discussions this evening and I'm not sure how much more energy everybody has. So before I go forward, you know, I think to let people know, we could push the discussion of the referendum question to our next C C E C meeting as long as it's passed before January 24th. But if we do not pass it at our January, we have to pass it by January 17th meeting. And so it gives us a very little wiggle room if we don't actually make a recommendation and try to pass it at our next meeting. And then obviously I have a feeling we're going to have a very long discussion about the administrative support thing. So I'm not sure I want to go down that route. But any, any, you know, why don't, why don't actually we take up the referendum item and if somebody wants to refer to another meeting, we'll do that. So let's start there. So we're going to take up item 75105. Before we get into it, does anybody want to make a motion to refer to this to our next meeting or does people just want to rip the band-aid off and get it done? Alder Bennett, go ahead.
Motion to refer to a future meeting.
Okay, that would be our next C C E C meeting. Is there a second? Actually not seeing a second, so that fails. So why don't we, we're going to jump in and get it, get it, get it done. So Attorney Haas, do you want to, Alder Foster, go ahead.
I was just, I'm going to make a motion for approval. I feel like we basically had this in front of us. So I, I don't know if, but we can also get a description of it first, if that's more appropriate, I guess.
Sure, I, I think I would like to get a quick description, but I'm going to entertain Alder Carter before we do that. Alder Carter, go ahead. Up, you're muted.
I just wanted a clarification. When I read this, I just want to make sure I'm reading this right. I'm looking at the text where it says even numbered districts will have one term. So when you do the overview, whoever's going to do the overview, can you address that and how that's going to work?
Yeah, let's go ahead and do a quick overview and hopefully that helps answer that. Attorney Haas, go ahead.
Thank you, President.
Sure. So the, Alder Paulson asked me to prepare two versions. So there's a version that is submitted as this legislative item or legislative item. There's also an attachment which has an alternate version. The, the primary version takes advantage of the statute that just says we can prepare a concise statement of the ordinance change without using, using the actual language. So that is the question, just that summarizing, shall the ordinance charter ordinance be amended to establish the staggered two-year terms? And then at the end has a clause that Alder Carter referred to with the 2025 spring election, including one-year terms for alders and even numbered districts. So there will be a more lengthy explanation published as a, with a notice for the election. But if we frame it, you know, like this, we can't like put in a bunch of explanation within the question. So, you know, the way this worked as we discussed at the council is even numbered districts in 2025 would have a one-year term. In 2026, they would then be elected for two-year terms. And so then after that, you would have every year an election for half of the council being elected for two-year terms. Whether or not that's, you know, clear enough in that description, I mean, we could, we could add, try to add a clause to say, you know, and thereafter, there would be even numbered districts would be elected for a two-year term. If that makes it more clear, you know, sometimes having it longer makes it more confusing for voters. The alternative is simply to print on the ballot, the exact ordinance language that was passed. And just with the introductory question saying, shall the city of Madison adopt the amendment to the ordinance? And so that's what Alder Paulson asked me to prepare for, for C C E C to, to consider each of those options. He did not express a preference to me either way.
Thank you. That did clear it up for me.
I will, I will just say, I mean, it's, it's obviously less for the voter to read with the primary option. But, you know, I, I don't know if it's more clear one way or the other, if they would want to see the actual ordinance language as it exists now. There's Alder Paulson.
Thank you, Alder Paulson, for joining us. And we just got a quick, uh, description on the two different options in front of us. And we're just about to start discussion. There's no motion yet. So does anybody have any discussion preference on direction with this? Alder Heck, go ahead.
Thanks. I, I much prefer the plain language version and I, I think that doesn't have the actual ordinance in it. But I do think that it's important to add a short clause as, as Attorney Haas mentioned, you know, something like, and thereafter, two-year terms or whatever would be appropriate. I can't remember exactly what you said, but I, I much prefer that version.
Yeah, and I think it's the, in the V2, it's in subsequent elections, the term for all elders shall be two years. Is that what you liked?
Yes.
Alder Foster, go ahead.
I would move what Heck just said.
I would move what Heck would just said. Okay, is there a second for what Heck just said?
No second what Heck just said.
All right. So for, for our notekeeper, our, our, our board secretary, it's, it's version one with the addition of that last sentence is the motion in subsequent elections, the term for all elders shall be two years. Discussion. Alder Paulson, do you want to talk at all about this?
Yeah, and thank you. I got home just a couple of minutes ago and so I appreciate the, the notice to hop on. I think the most important thing to keep in mind is just, you know, what, I mean, what do we think the most voters who are going to potentially be encountering this for the first time are going to try to interpret? So I, I do kind of like the, the regular text rather than throwing the, the legalese at them. And so I think that's helpful and I trust that the, you know, that the C C E C is kind of looking at it from, from this lens. So I will happily defer to what folks are, but I really would like, when you're thinking about this, put yourself in voter's shoes and realizing that we're not going to get to everybody through our, our stuff. And so some people are going to be encountering this for the first time. So whatever, brief but concise but clear, a direction we can give them is, is, I think, the most important thing to get. So, thank you.
Attorney Haas, go ahead.
I, I'll just throw one other option, which just kind of came to me. So it made me not be fully thought of. But if you really wanted to maybe cut out a line, if we're going to add that, one option might be just to say, shall the charter ordinances of the city of Madison be amended to establish staggered terms for members of the common council beginning in 2025? And, or, um, with the 2025 spring election, including one-year terms for alders and even numbered districts. And in subsequent elections, the term for all elders shall be two years. That would delete this, this phrase about alders and even numbered districts elected in even numbered years and alders in odd-numbered districts being elected in odd-numbered years. Now, that would shorten it. I don't know if it would make it less clear. I just wanted to throw that out if that would make a difference.
Okay, well, go ahead and see if anybody wants to talk about that. Thank you, Attorney Haas. Alder Reilly?
I'm a little bit confused as to the 2025, the even number elders. Where does the add numbers for one year? I'm just a little bit confused as how the sequence will be.
In, in, in 2025, all alders will be up for election. But the, the alders and even numbered districts would be up for a one-year term. And then they would run for a two-year term in 2026.
I see. Okay, okay, thank you.
Alder Foster.
Uh, I'd like to move an amendment. Attorney Haas just said, so removing the sections about the odd and even with the, well, I just want to move that, I guess, first and then I have one.
Is there a second for this amendment? Second by Alder Figaro Cole. And Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks. And I should have just asked a question first, but I'm, I'm assuming that, that the language, what we're talking about is that's just so how it's showing up on the ballot measure. And the part about the odd and even is still in the actual proposed ordinance change. We've got that clarity there. There's no issues. You're just suggesting we don't need to include that and that's what I moved. So I'm seeing nodding. So yeah, I think this would be better because it does, it's, it's, I think it's information that's not really relevant to the, to the average voter. That the, the real question is should we move from two years together to two years staggered? And the sort of detail of odd going first or even et cetera is important for us to have in the ordinance, but not important. And I think a distract, potential distraction from the voter about whether they prefer the staggered terms or not.
Any other discussion, questions, thoughts on this amendment that's being proposed? Alder Heck, go ahead.
I just want to make sure we get a reading before we vote to make, to make sure we've got it.
Karen, would you, are you in a position to do that? Would you like Attorney Haas to do that? So you make sure your notes are okay?
Sorry, I can, I can try and then Attorney Haas can, can step in to save me. So the amendment, Foster moves, seconded by Figaro Cole, to not include the language about odd and, about the odd and even. I assume years and districts, that portion of the language. And that's an amendment to Foster and Heck using version one with adding in in subsequent elections, the term for all elders shall be two years. Somebody want to help me a little bit on that odd and even what?
So maybe Attorney Haas, you could just restate what you did and we can just use that as.
Okay, yep. And, and I'm just typing it up here. I'll, I'll read it. And if you want, I can certainly share my screen. But, you know, the council will have the exact language in front of it for approval as well. So the way I have it written now is, shall the charter ordinances of the city of Madison be amended to establish staggered two-year terms for members of the common council beginning in 2025? With the 2025 spring election, including one-year terms for alders and even numbered districts. And in subsequent elections, the term for all elders shall be two years. So that reduces it really to, well, it probably cuts out a, a line or two of text compared to what we would have with the, with the original and the addition.
Discussion questions? Anybody want to roll call on this amendment? Not seeing any, I'm going to assume approval by unanimous consent. Now we have the main motion. Is there any discussion on the amended main motion? Not seeing any, is there a desire for a roll call? I'm going to assume approval by unanimous consent and we now have a resolution language that will go on to the council for, for its discussion and approval. So thank you. The next item is 75119. Alder Foster?
Move referral to our next C C E C meeting.
Sir, a second. Thank you, Alder Figaro Cole. Thank you, Alder Bennett. Unless I see otherwise, I'm going to assume approval by unanimous consent and we'll see this on our next agenda. All right, perfect. Council office update. I don't think we're going to have, can you read the whole thing, Karen? It's getting late. Is there anything in particular that you want to focus on or, and then I also will open up the floor if people have any questions. So why don't we, why don't we start with any questions and Karen can look and see if there's anything in particular that she really wants to, to call to our attention. But I assume everybody has gotten a copy of that and if they haven't read it yet, they will read it and reach out if they have questions. All right, not seeing any questions or, or, or big points that Karen wants to pull out. But I do encourage you to read, read the update as usual because they're, it's always good to know what's going on. Karen, go ahead.
Just say real quick, I added several project updates that may be of interest to all or some of you. And just contact me with questions. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you, Karen. Are there, so we'll move on to the next item, which is just future agenda items. I don't have a future agenda to show, show you folks. Others say obviously administrative support will probably, will certainly take a chunk of time. We could talk more about that at our next meeting. Alder Bennett?
This isn't an agenda item, so I can wait unless anyone else.
Okay, we have to be careful about what we talk about if it's not, not on our agenda. So can you make it apply to a future agenda item? Our discussion for a future agenda item?
More just an invitation. Tomorrow, my class is, my real estate 420 class urban, it's like regional urban economics is going to be presenting in C C B in the council room. It's just like a poster session and we did projects about like affordable housing and Vision Zero B R T and stuff. And we had like recommendations. So, you know, I just thought it would be fun if, you know, people here wanted to join.
Alder Bennett, I, I would love if you sent an email to all alders. I will say from experience, I have gone to some of those student presentations. They are incredibly lucky to actually have an alder participating in those student discussions, but they are, they are awesome. It is so cool to see the talent that U W has and the projects they work on and the collaboration with city staff, et cetera. If anybody has future agenda items, certainly let me know. I, you know, I'm going to try not to overload the agenda as much as we did tonight. I apologize. But do think we had some good discussions and I would happily entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. And a second by Alder Figaro Cole. If there's no objection, I'm going to assume approval by unanimous consent. Thank you, everybody, and have a great night.
Night.
Bye.